Yes, I make a motion to accept the minutes from November 9th, 2021. I second that. And I make a motion to accept the minutes from this special beginning of November 19th, 2021.
I have something on my mouth. What do we pay Idaho Department of Lands for?
Okay, yeah, there's a few things I wanted to discuss with you guys. Idaho Department of Lands is for the fire department. We are paying them $1,703.69 and we will be getting back-
$1,500. It's the minister, the grant, the only grant that we qualify for.
So, and also too, that AAA tree is $1,300 this year. They did some extra work for us, but we also got donation of, what was it, a thousand? I think it was a thousand.
Yes, from-
The plant people, Hillen Valley.
That's it. And what was the-
The zoo.
The big one at Kendra Gag?
Kendra Gag, Josh needed new tires for the truck.
What tires again, or they're breaking the tires like they should be?
For the same tires as we've gotten before.
So why is it buying by tires? We'll have to ask in the next meeting.
Yeah, they shouldn't be versing on tires.
Unless they're, unless they're the cheapest ones they have, which I doubt they are.
Well, I'm not sure. I know that she gave them a lot better deal up there than he was giving over at a commercial, but I don't know. But that's comparing pounds one by one. I'm not sure.
What's the share corp?
Share corp is degreaser for the wastewater plant. If we order in a 50 gallon barrel, it's cheaper than ordering the 30 gallon barrels, so it's- I use one gallon a week generally, so it lasts about a year. But in the winter, I have to use a little more, and I just happen to run out, so.
I assume the western states must have been for the backhoe?
For the door that broke. Did you guys know that? So, a couple of months ago, the wind, had a windstorm, and I latched the doors, but I didn't lock them. The wind blew, the doors opened, and it swung around and smashed the glass on the back door and shattered it.
Oh boy.
So, it has a door stopper, I mean everything, but-
Is that at the wastewater plant?
Solid stop.
Was that, was that the way parked at the wastewater plant when it happened?
Oh.
So, the door costs $744. They sent us the wrong door initially, so we had to take it back. And they made a shipment from Germany. It was the only one in the world. They shipped it from Germany. And we got it put in last week, so.
So we have a German door.
Apparently, they make all their cap parts in Germany. Or most of their cap parts.
I move to approve the bills for the month of November.
Oh, you guys saw the hiccup too? The handwritten part? Yeah, for some reason, Cassell is, I called Cassell and they couldn't get it off either, but it has been paid. It was paid in the end of September.
The prime land one?
Yeah, that prime land one. I forgot to mention that one too, so. So, it's like Cassell issue, so.
Do we need to read by title on the resolution, or is that only ordinance?
Just on the ordinance, I'm ready if you want me to.
I move to approve resolution 2021-07.
How about the baseball association? What have we got?
Hi. I'm not Mike. But I think I'm his clone lately.
Yes, all of the things that you addressed at the last council meeting, we addressed at our meeting. And I'd like to introduce to you our new secretary. She, I'm the treasurer now, and before I was treasurer's secretary. And Laurel Holland is now the secretary. So, I'm going to let her go through the list of what we addressed as far as your concerns were, so.
You have to accept her new job.
And I take notes. So Laurel Holland, thanks for giving us the feedback that you did in the last meeting. We just had three items of follow-up really. The first point can be bunched into field cleanliness and just general upkeep at the city park, specifically the pavilion, the bathrooms, and then also the dugouts. So typically, we have the teams actually clean up all their spaces, coaches as well. We do film maintenance and pick up after every single game, but we can do a better job at reminding them about this. But one item of follow-up we did have was specifically about the dugouts. We're looking into maybe adding perhaps doors to the dugout so we could lock off, not the field, but just the dugout specifically. But we wondered what was really specifically dirty about the dugouts. There was a note it took three hours to clean.
Three days?
Three days.
Well, the mud, the dirt and mud that was packed in and would never spread, then the garbage needs to be, you know, picked up. And Rosie, she's a very specific and spanned young lady, and she- When she complains, it's bad.
So sweeping up the mud off that does kick up right up there against the dugout?
You've got floor, bring it up, and then when they throw their clothes down and wear extra shirts and all of that, yeah, they need to pick up. Especially at the end of the season, for that stuff all picked up.
Okay, so shirts that might have been left behind, extra food bags, I understand there's bags of seeds-
Shoes.
Shoes, okay. All right, so some things that come to mind are like bins that we could use to keep our extra stuff in, but we'll take that back and really focus on that next year. We can have more buy-in from the coaches and parents as well, actually, on that particular item, so. We'll look into the bathroom part too. Typically, we don't export them to the bathrooms or really check in on it, so we'll make sure to do a sweep at the end of every game, or at the end of every evening, just to check in on what's up in there.
And we're going to be putting up some laminated signs in the dugouts and in the restrooms, you know, like put your seeds in the garbage can and this kind of thing. So, we'll be putting those up intermittently around the field. And another thing that I thought of the other night was, would it be possible to put like an extra garbage can inside the dugouts for the guys to throw their bags in and their seeds in or whatever?
There is.
Extra undergarbage can?
I think we've got an extra one already, but if not, we can buy one.
I think if we have it right in front of them, it'd be easier for them to use than if we don't give them something.
Or at least one on each end of the dugout, like two in each dugout.
Yes.
Visitor side as well. The visitor's side dugout.
Yeah, both, both sides.
Yeah, both sides.
Along the topic of signs, actually, we also address parking. Parking specifically behind the gates. So there's a part where, you know, you could loop around and drive to, you know, the other side, pavilion, the restrooms, behind the dugouts. For safety reasons, we can't lock those during games, obviously, but we did have a thought that we can print up more signs to guide parking, specifically no parking behind the gates unless medically clearance to do so or for some other purpose. And then also unhired parking, and we plan to do that with laminated signs. We thought though to block off the gates without blocking them, perhaps sawhorses could be used, but that would be something we'd like your input on, and perhaps if you could provide.
The gates do close, and they don't lock the entire walk. You could still walk through, you just can't drive through when the gates are closed.
It's for ambulance purpose, I believe.
But if they were just peeled closed, they could be pushed open easily if an ambulance needed to get in.
Yeah, there are abu quino and mountain hedges, so they just-
I think part of it's going to be training the people too not to try to push those open to come into the parking area there, because they've been doing it for so long. And we figured out who it was that ran over the sprinklers, it was one of the umpires, so.
Well, it's not just one person.
No, but that was his, that was his favorite place to park.
Yeah, it just seems to be everybody, I mean, that road's always so wide, and so people are parking on both sides of it. It's not just the sprinkler heads, it's the grass, it's everything, and so one person does it, you're gonna get rid of people.
Well, we're gonna do our best to cease that, you know, as far as the parking, except for like the coaches to be able to come in. So, we'll do our best. But getting people to break the habit, that's the hard part.
Yeah, getting the coaches in and shutting the gates.
Right.
That would be afterwards too, if we don't want people driving through there after games as well or doing regular recreational hours. I don't know that I've seen them closed, but that would be something we'd have to consider as well. But we can take that back to our, where we want to prep for March, when we start to prep for the next season.
You know, the main thing is the ball players need to park in the parking lot. They don't have to drive on the whole plate just to-
We're gonna have them park in the overflow.
Which brings me to my third topic. So on parking in general, first we'll have guidance for, you know, people who are coming to visit us and those who are doing it on our behalf like the umpires. We will ask for the players though who do drive themselves to park in the overflow parking lot. I believe that was offered at the last meeting, I wasn't here for that. One thing we do want to consider though is with practice or late night, some of those games might run into the dark hours, and there is no current lighting on the overflow. There are lights that we could potentially install. I think Mike also talked to Avista, and Avista could lend me the equipment to do that, to post lights over the overflow coming off of the softball field. And I believe we also have an extra pole down there. But then we'd have to work together on those permitting and providing an electrician if we were to pursue that particular project.
Especially with the girls.
You'd wanna, you'd wanna put the lights on the side of the little gravel road. You'd wanna put the lights there to shine in the other way. You don't want them shining like on the other side, but never be in the- When people come up and down the highway, they'd be shining in their eyes. So put it on, I guess you'd say this side, and face it out.
Would you be opposed overheads that go over the parking lot? Because it wouldn't be able to drive-
Yeah, that would be fine, but I still think it would be better to be on this side by, because that parking lot is a solid lot. And so on this side, I think it would be a little easier to be, except that. I think, I see there's two poles sitting there, so I might need two lights for the walkway, kind of, when you come out of the parking lot for the walkway to get to the-
Dan, I was met with Mike today, and he said that one of those poles they would use in the parking lot, the overflow lot, and they would use those two poles that are there, and they would shine it onto the road, the gravel road, and they want the students to walk on the road and not next to the little ball field.
Oh, okay.
Because he's very, because when we walked there today, there's rocks that roll down, it can get swampy. We'd have to clean it out, build a new bridge, all that.
Yeah.
He said, and then it would come off of the little ball field power pole, which is what the baseball association is paying the power for. So, sorry, he had to go down there today to meet with them just to clarify, in case anybody had any questions, so. And he said Matt will provide all the wiring and the lights, Avista will provide that free charge, and he's gonna talk to Ken Cannon about doing the wiring piece, either asking him to do it for free or paying him or something to do it, but he thinks that they can do it that way.
And I will break that rule down, so that there isn't that chuckle yet.
Now, is that going to need permits? Do we need to look into permitting to do that?
Well, probably like they did with the other line. If there's gonna be conduit run, then there may have to be a permit pulled, yeah, to do that.
Backhoe by the, electrical by the state. So you have to contact the state to see if they need, require a permit, because they're the ones that do the electrical inspections.
Okay. We'll have Mike do that.
Okay, I think that was the third topic, or the third item of follow-up. So we won't plan on having the kids park on the path, but actually rather than park them up, but that project will have to be done later. You know, we'll plan ahead for that, and I wouldn't anticipate it being too dark until maybe, you know, if we're playing really late, it would be later on definitely in this summer, so. Any other questions or items of feedback for us to take back, other than what was discussed?
And the school buses are going to be parking in the overflow also. Mike will take care of getting ahold of the proper people for that.
That's a good thing.
Oh, I wanted to ask about the parking. Is that just for events that you're asking for them to park there, or also during practice?
I think the main thing is just the events, because there's a lot of cars and practices, just the kids sell there.
I think the big thing with practice is we just want them in the parking lot and not-
Behind the-
Not behind the gates.
Sure. Okay, that makes sense. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, the fire department does not have internet service down at the fire hall, and I refuse, after a 16-year gun battle with TDS, to jump their boots and wreck their building. And we're looking to get internet through inland cellular, but I need permission to be on the city's account before we can do this.
So how does it work with inland cellular?
Uh, we're gonna get a portable, what's called portable hotspot. Don't ask me how it works, I don't know, I don't know this on that. But it will give us wireless internet down there. We can't get wireless internet from first step because the finger ridge blocks the signal from the repeater. We are two tenths of a mile too far from the tribe's wireless internet repeater.
Oh, you're stepping too far that way.
We're too far this way, and we're blocked by the finger ridge from up here. And we gotta spend $130 basically for the equipment, and then there'll be a $40 a month charge. And if we can have permission to be on the city's account and then pay for it out of the budget-
Did you talk to Spectrum? Yes.
There's no fire rocket down there.
Why aren't they going overhead though? They're not going in the ground.
They're not going that far down there.
Oh, they're not?
No.
What do you guys use the internet for down there?
Um, I have to do reporting to Homeland Security, the NFPA, the state. It all, you know, you know what I mean? It all trickles down to county and here, but it all starts with Homeland Security and-
So it's all your reporting and stuff?
It's all online, yes.
We have a couple of these, I just have these in my, actually just for my section at the police department. Fantastic, because you can take it with you.
Yep, that's the idea.
So if you had to go to meet your incident, you could have Wi-Fi at that incident.
Especially with hazmat, hazmat.
Yeah, but you can literally access internet anywhere you want, as long as you get, because it creates its own Wi-Fi. I disagree with any of those coming out of internet.
That, that would be, that's the next thing.
Forty bucks a month is what we pay through Verizon at the city, so I think that's great. I think it's a great safety feature.
So you, you just need permission to be on our account? You're gonna pay the rest of it?
It will pay it out of our budget, yeah. I just need the okay to be on the account.
I'm okay with that.
I move, I move to let the fire department be on the city's inland cellular account so they can have internet at the hotspot.
I'll second.
Thank you. Donna thanks you too. After 16 years as the fire department being in her kitchen, she's looking forward to it. Thank you.
I make a motion, needs ordinance by Title 2021-04, second.
This is ordinance 2021-04, an ordinance of the city of Juilliata, Lakeview County, State of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Chapter 5.04, Title 5, in the City Code of Juilliata, Idaho, pertaining to licenses to serve or sell beer, wine, and alcoholic liquor, as defined therein, providing definitions, establishing procedures for the application for issuance of and revocation of such licenses, establishing fees for such licenses, establishing regulations with regards to such licenses, and two persons under the age of 21 years. Providing that violations of this ordinance shall be a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of up to $300 and by a jail sentence of up to six months. Providing that if any portion of this ordinance is invalidated, the remaining portions not so affected shall remain enforceable. Providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. And providing that this ordinance shall be effective upon adoption and publication as provided by law.
I saw the boilerplate stuff we put over in the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, the only thing that changed was the date. So one of ours to expire January 31st of every year, just like Lakeview County, so it follows that. They took off the fee in the ordinance because that's in our fee resolution that we pass every year. So that'll make it easier to change if it ever needs to be changed. It added a way to pay, I think it's a half, half of the fee if somebody comes in less than a certain amount of time and wants to have a new alcohol license. I'm sorry, I can't remember what that was, it isn't there.
It'll need to change hands.
Right, right, so they don't have to pay for an entire year. They only are gonna need it, like for like 60 days before it expires. Everything else is pretty much the same. There's no crazy changes or anything like that.
I haven't given you the okay to-
Okay to, right, right. Okay to approve old ones, new ones will come in council.
I'll make a motion, accept. Ordinance 2021-04, second.
Yes.
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 Okay, so the CDs, what we were paying until December, what we were getting for interest was .4. It's going down, it's going to .3. So I don't know if you want to roll it over at .3 for six months or stay at .4 for a year. It's .3% for six months, but it'll go up and they'll stay at four.
Do we know what the dollar difference would be, if, depending on how much-
It makes sense if-
Not that much, because it rarely-
That's math, and I'm calling it. Yeah.
Just a few dollars.
What's your recommendation?
I say we stick with six months, just because eventually it's gotta go off. And I don't want to lock us into a big, long-term, especially with them being such high dollar amounts, some of them, that, like if you look at the two, the last one, that still has the 4.75%. We're, we're making about five, what is it, fifteen some dollars every quarter. And because that's locked in for four years, we're safe with that. Because luckily it happened when, in October, before the bomb kind of dropped on us. So I, and we might have to stick with six months for a while, until it starts looking a little bit better. Even if we could get to two, you know, .6 or .7, we could go for maybe a year and that would up it, but.
Is the one you're talking about, 2.45?
Yeah.
I think it's the six.
I move that we leave them at the six-month thing.
It's just kind of a guessing game. You don't want to lock yourself in for four years.
That's right.
It's gotta get better.
Well, we can't make a decision.
No business, yes. Thank you. I'm, thanks for letting me be here. Anyway, the reason I'm here is because your guys' attorney said I should be here to ask permission not to, not to avoid not going through planning and zoning, which I very much plan on going through planning and zoning. The other part is, there's two different kinds of planning and zonings. The reason is because of the size of a subdivision. One of them more than four is a different style of subdivision than less than four. What I previously did, I started up a plan, and I showed it to everybody, and the plan was, it was just what I started with. I didn't know what to do, how to do it, or I wanted an end result. And I got an end result, and there was a lot of people that said, no, I don't like this, no, I don't like this. So I went around to every one of the neighbors and asked them what they wanted. And after asking them and after reading what the zoning, building and zoning wanted, or what they expected, I tried to be a little bit ahead of the curve and get everybody to, after I- I tried to be a little bit ahead of the curve and get everybody to, after I did what every single neighbor wanted to have done. Everybody, and the other thing is in the planning and zoning, it says everybody within three hundred feet of the radius needs to be informed of what's going on and have to sign off on it, along with the meeting.
But they don't have to sign off on anything. We just, once we have a public hearing, they, we said, once we've had the date of the public hearing, we send out the nonsense to them of a public hearing, that's all that's supposed to be done.
I'm sorry, I misstated that, not, not, just that they were aware of it, it's what I wanted them to do, and make it. So you guys were aware that I did talk to all the neighbors. But it wasn't, there had, what the attorney called me for was that he said that I had sold property and I'd received money from it. And that I was gonna have an opportunity to go to jail and all kinds of things. And I said, no, 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 I said, I haven't sold anything, I just, I'm trying to get everything all planned, so I can bring the plan to you first. Cause I, I didn't want, I don't wanna go behind anybody's back, and I wanna do what's right, and I know that there's a fee for it. But anyway, I just didn't know which step to start first, but after looking at the, after looking at the paper that Wendy sent me, well, it wasn't, it wasn't a cookie cutter for my situation up there, and that's why when I called you, you said, well, fill out what you can, and then you'll go through with the rest of it. But anyway, so just so everybody knows, there has not been any property sold at all. And all the neighbors are all happy with what my plan is, and I have, you guys have the map of the plan. And there is numbers of what every, it also states on there to have some, to be, to be, uh, to be accurate with what you're doing. And that's why, that's why I had the surveyor do every single thing that was in the plan. Not, it's not finalized at all, there's not been any money transpired, and I do wanna go through you, but that, so that plan is exactly what I would like to have done. Having that road rebuilt, instead of, instead of building the road down there, there's not gonna be any people added past the corner that I built big enough for a fire truck to turn around. There's not gonna be any people that goes down Passau, the people, my neighbors wanted to buy the property, but joining themselves. So instead of having, instead of having a subdivision with a lot of sales and a lot of different people coming in. Kathy and I have decided what we wanted to do to make it so that corner was right. Matt Anderson wanted to extend his property line. Dave and Jessica wanted to, wanted to change their property line. And after I talked to your attorney during this time, he said, well, really, you're not having a big subdivision. There's only one reason you're having a subdivision, and that is I'm dividing my piece of property, that my trailer house is sitting right on, it's sitting right on a corner, it sits, it sits right on, so there's no way to sell a lot as a whole, you have to divide it. Cause if I sold this, I would have to sell the house and the rest of the hill at the same time. Well, I don't wanna sell the house, I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna sell off two acres, and, and that means I have to divide one piece one time. And by the description of the subdivision, if you divide one piece of property by one, it's a subdivision. But the, the idea for, so Matt and Heather Anderson would like to buy it. And what they said for their driveway is that they wanna come off of the corner and go at an angle to their house. I don't mean to point, sorry, but they're going, they're gonna go at an angle to the, to where they're, probably they'll build a road to their house. But they won't even be using the, the, the existing driveway. So there won't be any, there won't be any new people on that road at all. And the only reason I'm saying that is so everybody's informed of what I would like to do up there. Yes, sir.
So have you filled out the paperwork and given it to Cynthia?
No, I have not, because I wanted to make sure you guys, I wanted to ask you whether you felt it to be a major or a minor, because it's a.
Well, I think what needs to happen is the paperwork, this is just my opinion, needs to be filled out, needs to go to our planning and zoning, and they need to give their recommendation to us.
Right. But, major, major.
They'll decide that and let us know their recommendation.
There's two different forms for a minor or major showing, isn't there?
I think it would be minor. Major would be lots of lots.
Yeah, well, actually, he does have a lot of lots.
Is it up to four for a minor?
I see.
So major subdivision, proposals for division of land into more than four lots. When you look at that map, he's got lots one, two, three, four, parcels A, B, C, D, and it goes into major. If it requires dedication right away, it requires it to be major. And every one of those lots, except for the parcel C, has got an easement for ingress and egress, which is a right of way. So it'd have to be major.
My suggestion is follow their rules, so that everything is on the square and in that way. Nobody can come back onto you and write a lawsuit against you for not doing necessary that from the, they can't prove it. So if, just kind of go with their rules, and it's gonna be a whole lot easier for, for you and the neighbors and the whole town.
So, and I agree, well, hard as they, by what your attorney said, it was only a minor, and that was the.
Not why I read it. But he hasn't got the maps either, so he didn't know how much, where the roads were and anything like that, so.
Well, I'll go with you, and then you can start wherever you want.
You start, you fill the paperwork up, and turn it in, and then we'll get started.
Then can you give me the paperwork you want me to fill out?
You've already received the paperwork to fill out.
I got two different kinds, so that's what I've been saying, I can show you the two that I got.
Yes, let's see what you've got.
If that's the last of the meeting, I'll sit down, I can go.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
The only thing I think I'm supposed to talk about is, we got a TOC violation on our water for last month. So what that means is our ratio of organic carbon to what's, that we're filtering and what's in the river went over the limit. So we are gonna have to put it on our Wando again, that our TOC limit has been reached, or, you know. And so we talked about it today, Josh and I, and the mayor, and he was going to call DQ and find out what we can do. We're gonna do an investigative, um, sample, uh, cluster. We're gonna start at the water plant, go below the water plant, go above the water plant to buy the feedlot. We're gonna go to Kendrick, above and below their sewer system, and we're gonna sample those points and see what we get for carbon. Because it mainly seems to be around this time of year when we start having a problem. And Kendrick has it discharged all summer, they're just now, last month started discharging again. I don't wanna point the finger, but we need more information. So we're gonna work with DQ and start some sort of investigation to find out what it is, what it's causing. It's not harmful, but it's still considered a violation to have it in the water at certain levels, so.
Is it like a fine for that, or do you get so many chances to make it right, or?
Well, um, if it's, if it's something upstream causing a problem, I'd use the feedlot or Kendrick Sewer, San Jose Sewer system, or whatever, then a DQ will, hey, you gotta hurry and use it.
I said, no, we had to pay a fine or something.
We're not being fined, it just gets, like I said, it becomes a mess of record, it's a formality. But water plants.
I think you're doing the right thing. Only as often as coincident.
Like Mick was saying earlier, it was such a dry summer, that the feedlot and everything, all that water is just running off, the surface water's not, it's soaking in the ground. So, anyway, we're gonna start working on it seriously, figure out what's going on.
Uh, I wanted to thank everybody who came out to the lighting ceremony, had a good turnout, we had over, over a hundred people. And, um, yeah, it was fun, we got a hundred and eighty-five dollars donated towards lights next year, and went through a bunch of cocoa and had a good time. And I turned out really well, and we're real happy with the park, and we've got a lot of compliments from people driving by in, in town.
Yeah, we had lots of good compliments from people, basically people that come to walk.
Yep.
And use the trail and, and all.
It was nice that the choir brought extra stuff for the, everybody to join in. It was good.
How about you, Wendy?
I'm pretty boring to most.
He should have said no.
Just say, I'm lost, come down.
Then I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.